All right, hello Jeremy and Mary.
Yeah, good morning.
Hello, hello.
Hi guys.
The map that printed out from this didn't do the same colors that are on the screen. They're all blue. That's somewhat complicated.
That's for the one that you would prepare?
Yeah.
That's interesting, the PDF I have, that's them all blue as well, blue shades of blue. I wonder if that's a if those, the shades represented deviation.
I've seen this iteration. Hello Tom.
Good morning. I think Jeanie Albert is going to be there at the Secretary of State's office, I think that was her intention. Based upon the last word, I think she's exchanged with you, Rob. Okay. Hi Mary.
Morning Tom.
Hello Jeremy.
Good morning.
Jerry, Jeremy, bring us up to date on where you are right now this morning with your map project.
Sure, so I took the, I took the suggestions, you know, I don't have, I left it in my office. I took the list of suggestions, there were some fixes down, down by Rattleboro to move some things around, some stuff up in Franklin County, I made a lot of the changes that folks recommended. I also did some rebalancing of districts like I mentioned where you had some negative deviation and positive deviation, but we're splitting a town. So I managed to even those out quite a bit more. I, I sent, maybe, did I only, maybe I only sent it to Mia and I didn't send it to the rest of you, maybe, let me, let me do that real quick. But no, so my, my map has been updated with some of the feedback from, from Monday.
Good. Are there any parts of the state that you haven't reached yet?
I mean, so my map is essentially done with the updates that we talked about on Monday. Where, where I could make them. I mean, I, there, there was some feedback that was just not feasible with the layout that I had.
Right.
But I, I did what I could without starting from scratch.
And what is your, the overall deviation, what's the low and the high?
Uh, hold on a second. I need to bring up that window. I have, I have like a nine and a nine. So that would be 18, I guess then.
And
I can, I can share my screen again, I mean, if you want to get, you know, concretely added.
Well, what I, the other, the other metric I've been tracking is how many more towns than are currently subdivided and into different districts are in your draft map.
Um, that's, that's a good question. I can, I can count that quick, I mean, I'm just gonna have to do it manually.
Yeah, figure that out and let us know, that's a good thing to know. And one of the things that, that as a group, we really haven't talked about is the, in MAPTitude, there are one or two measurements of the compactness and contiguity factors. And in, since that's set out in our statute as one of the secondary factors, what we did 10 years ago and what I think we need to do again is in the narrative blurb for each district that goes out in addition to the map, not before we send this out to the boards of civil authority, but in we state what those measurements are for each district and I remember one of the measurements because it's got a a memorable name. Polsby Popper. And, you know, when these draft maps are in MAPTitude, I believe there's a layer or an indicator that you can somehow turn on or look at that gives that information for each district.
Tom, this is Jeanie, morning.
Morning.
You can run a report, that's what I did. Not, it was sort of for the it, it shows it actually, if you run a report, I, I forget now actually, and I don't think I have it with me, but um, it'll give you the score for each district and then it'll give you kind of an overall score like the median and another, and other things for the whole map. Um, but while I was doing that, I couldn't remember which one to pick, but I did pick that one because of this memorable name, so. There's several, there's several different.
Yeah, and they, they, they measure, I think they measure somewhat or slightly different things.
They seem to, I, I, my, my sense is that they are all some version of area to circumference, sort of perimeter, I mean perimeter.
And I will, I will need to refresh my recollection about what is considered a good, solid score and what isn't. And how we might, what, how those ones, I mean, it's, this is certainly not the, the single largest factor in what we do, but it is something that we do, we are, I think we're obliged to track. And with the odd shape to begin with of certain towns, it's inevitable that we get some that are not great on the money, I suppose. Well, go ahead Jeremy.
I, I have something like 40, 40 some districts that are 40 some towns that have divisions, that's including, that's including, you know, big towns, cities that obviously necessarily have to be subdivided. So I think, I think I got 47.
Yeah. And there's, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, how many towns are internally subdivided only. I don't think we were concerned about those so much.
Well, it's any, any town with a population greater than 110% of the
Right.
You know, of the ideal.
So I don't, I don't, I'm not interested so much in, in Burlington, Montpelier. Rattlin, South Burlington, Essex, Winus, I mean, the ones that can be internally, although a bunch of those are currently single member districts, without a two-member districts. Well, let me ask you this, I had suggested in, in, on an email night, week. This work session is whatever we want, you want it to be. And to be helpful to, in particular to those who have been toiling on the map making work, so, and for members who want to ask questions of them, so one way of proceeding would be to have each of Rob, Jeremy and Jean put their map up on the screen and see what the questions are and also give each an opportunity to, to do an overview, as I said in that email. It, it takes some time and some real focus energy to look at a map that you haven't prepared and understand what, you know, what's there. And so that, that isn't, that's an opportunity to, we can, we can, you could proceed that way if you want, I don't want to steer, steer this, this is I think primarily for the, the mappers and what would be useful for them. What do you say, Rob?
Sure, I, I guess, I guess where do you want to start? The three of us, I guess, just put our, one of our maps up there and, and we can identify where we see problems solved, problems created and open the floor for suggestions.
I think it's each, that's maybe a good start is if you could put up a map and say, this is, these are the areas that I'm not happy with yet. Or that I think might need some additional work. And Rob, in, in your case, can we you're still in, in District Builder? I think we need to get that converted to MAPTitude at some point pretty quick.
I could use some tech help with that.
Okay.
Oh, that'd be sweet, I'll ask, but I'm not.
So I, I, I think that may be putting the cart before the horse, I, I think if we choose Rob's map, which is a distinct possibility, I think once we've done that and if we choose that that's the way to go, then we can move it to MAPTitude. Or, or are you saying just to have them on equal footing so that we can put them all out there, Tom?
Well, we're, I, I mean, they're all going out there in the, in the sense that they are all public records and available to the public under the public records laws. I was thinking that in order for board members to make an informed choice and take a vote on which map to send to the boards of civil authority, it might be good to have them all in the same mapping software format.
This is just a technical question, I, I would tend to agree with Jeremy, this, let's figure out what we want to do, depending upon how much work it is to translate it from District Builder to MAPTitude. Mia's done it in a few hours since I sent it yesterday afternoon to this morning. It may not be that big a deal, but if it is as I would have anticipated a, a huge undertaking to do, then I would tend to agree with Jeremy, let's figure out what we want to do first and then do it once.
Well, Jean, what was your experience?
Mary, let's Amanda, I'll let her go first, but then I'll, I will.
Sure, Mary. I have trouble looking at maps in District Builder because I can't, they don't have town names attached and I can't distinguish the colors finely enough on my screen to know exactly what's going on. So I actually would prefer to have them in MAPTitude and I think since MAPTitude gives us the measures that we, or at least some of the measures we need to look at, it would be helpful to have those to compare before we make a decision.
So as it turned out, I, it was, it took me kind of two sessions to get into MAPTitude. I was actually kind of surprised, the hardest part was remembering the steps just to get in there, to get into it and, and start working. And a few things just to reorient about how it worked. After that, it was quite, it was not hard to do or didn't take that long, I'm not trying to say I want to do it again necessarily. Or whatever, I'm just saying, that wouldn't necessarily be that hard or take too long. Especially since you already kind of got it all together, making many adjustments. Hardest parts are we had to go through the same blocks together. But even that ended up, once you get used to it, not being that hard. So that was just my experience, but mostly because I had frontloaded so much of the work in advance, which you obviously have to.
Thank you Jean, Eric, do you happen to know whether Mia has taken a map from District Builder into MAPTitude?
No, I think I misspoke. It's my misunderstanding of the different tech platforms. I guess Rob's map went straight to ArcGIS, ArcGIS, whatever that is, which is used by VCGI. And that's how they're able to prepare the printing. I don't, I don't fully understand all the words I just said.
It's okay, neither do we.
Um, but I think you're touching on a question that we will have or do have. And we're looking for the board's feedback on what you need and think you'll need for the package to towns in regards to maps, how the detail or coloring looks, printing, whatever that might be, if you just think about emerging from your decision, everything you'll need, so that we can understand what we'll need to do to prepare those, prepare all of that.
Yeah, I.
But I don't know if I'm putting the cart before the horse, but hopefully Tom, you guys can have, discuss that a little bit.
No, I, I, I think we should see. And I think, I think we, I feel pretty strongly that not for today's discussion, but before we can take a vote in, in light of Mary's experience, getting all three of these maps in MAPTitude is important. It's also the way that the towns are going to be responding when these maps are generated in the legislative process. And I think it behooves us to be operating in the same system as legislature will be operating on, you know, regardless of how we may think about the difficulties, learning how to work in and working in MAPTitude versus some other programs. That's the standard that the legislature is using and next year, what the towns and residents of towns will be looking at, and I, I think we should be on, all on the same page, so to speak. Having said that, I'm not, I'm not able to help you, Rob, make that conversion. It may be possible that if part of this work session Jean Ewick could sit with Rob and maybe walk him through some of what you had to figure out on your own to make that version yourself, and that might be some time well spent. I'll leave that up to the, to the two of you. Rob, what is your, so far at least, your overall deviation, your, your low and your, and your high?
Unfortunately, District Builder doesn't calculate, calculate that for me, but just eyeballing it, I mean, I've got a couple that are high, but I, I made a note of them. But generally, they're around, I, I try to make sure I stay with, well within the, the that 8% on either, either way deviation. So my, it's, it's a bit of a guess, but you know, as I said, I do have a couple of districts where I let, allowed the numbers to be high, like 500 over the median as opposed to the, you know, 40, 4300 or, or 4, 430 over the median. In order to keep a town intact, and I thought that that would be a debate we have. You know, is it better to keep the town line intact and be a little over, we could easily split it in each of these cases by, like, like Heinsberg and Charlotte is the example I'll use. They're almost perfect, two single town, single member districts. Heinsberg is a, one of them is a little light and one of them is like 500 heavy. Charlotte is a little, Charlotte's light, Heinsberg is like 500 heavy. Right now, they're already split, there's, there's a Heinsberg Charlotte district, we could do that again, or we could make an argument that it's the benefits of having one town, one rep outweigh that.
That's a good example, that was one that I too noticed in the prior, or the current map, I should say. Charlotte has a little bit of Heinsberg added to get, to get its deviation up, you know, to, to reduce its deviation, I should say. And then that trend sort of continues, and so, as Rob was saying, one's too small and one's too large, as a two-member district, it's almost perfect. Deviation wise. You know, and in a way, I I don't necessarily want to guess actually, about my assumption is that they prefer to be separate, but I don't even know that, we, we don't necessarily know that without asking, I suppose. But they're at the outer edges of the deviation on my map, but not beyond it. I mean, if I, yeah.
Did that scenario get worse over the last 10 years or was it? Okay.
In other words, like what I did was I just took a tiny bit more from I took, I took a little bit more from Heinsberg basically, because they already kind of had that going and I figured, well, that is the simplest way to adjust it. Yep. And keep them as two separate single member districts. But that's a situation, and, and you know, my assumption being that that would be preferred to those towns, but that's an assumption that we could probably find out if it was correct or not.
Yeah, yeah, that, that certainly was their, seemed to be their position 10, 10 years ago.
I, I should add that they could exist with no adjustments, like Heinsberg could be just by itself and Charlotte could be just by itself, but that pushes my deviation, overall deviation to 16. And I was trying to keep it under 16. It's a pretty small difference.
Yeah, so, so there, there, there are three options, they could be a two-member district and that would work out fine, they could be a, two single member districts and there are waiting problems, but I, I think within reason, or we could do what they do now, which is take a little bit from Heinsberg and back it on to Charlotte.
And, and that's, and that's a pretty consistent problem in other places as well, where we have reasonably high deviations one way or the other, that if we were willing to, or if the towns were willing to split towns, so many, I guess we get back to the sort of philosophical question of do we prefer to have lower deviation or do we prefer to not split towns? Because the, all of the deviations that, that, that I'm looking at that are on the high side are to try to keep towns intact and there's not really, there's not really a way around it.
Could you, can you give us an, an example, maybe Jeremy?
All right, so I'm just trying to, trying to find one. We talked about Franklin County, I think, you know, where you have towns that are just, kind of just south of the right size to be, you know, a single member district, so I'm thinking like, you know, like Berkshire and Richford. Right now I have them in a, together in a minus 9.2%. Can, can I share my screen, would, would that be more helpful than me talking this out? Eric, could you, uh, could you let me share my screen? All right, thank you.
I, I had the same issue with Berkshire and Richford in mind too, Jeremy.
You should be good to go.
Thanks Eric.
Well, while Jeremy's getting his, his screen up, I just wanted, if we refer back to the survey that we did, what the public response was, is that they wanted us to focus on the single member districts, but when it came to having an exact deviation, their preference was a significant majority that we conform to town lines. If it came under that priority.
Okay, so I expect that you all can see that, and, and so, so I'm sorry, Rob, I was setting that up, did you say they preferred that we conform to town lines rather than?
Yes. Within constitutional bounds, so some, like the Heinsberg thing, in, in my map and I think Geez goes a little bit beyond constitutional, so we, we have to have a debate about that.
Right, so here's Berkshire, Richford, which is minus 9.2 and, and nearby I've got, you know, Franklin, Highgate, Sheldon, which is at 8.7. This would be, this, we could almost even this out by just taking a chunk, half of, you know, half of Franklin. But, but, but is that, is that preferable? I mean, we have something else, so in this one, I've got Ennisburg, Bakersfield at minus 4.8 and nearby a bunch of towns at 2.4. We could make that much more even by heading into Montgomery, I mean, in this scenario plays itself out repeatedly. Derby, Holland, Morgan, Charleston, negative six, positive 6.8.
Yeah.
I think the more, the, the, I mean, that, there's, I absolutely agree, there, there's, there's, you come across this kind of thing, of course, often, especially in the areas that have well, I actually don't want you to make a generalization, but the, the two that I did want to point out because of the challenge of the, our expectation to the constitutional limit were Georgia and Fairfax, which are each their own districts of what were currently Franklin 1 and 2. Franklin 1 and Franklin 2. Uh, where, where am I? Georgia, which is Franklin 1, is currently 13% too big and and Fairfax, which is currently Franklin 2, is almost 17% too big. So there's really no way to avoid dividing at least, or taking off a piece of at least one of those towns, you just can't get around it, you, you know, I, I actually took off a piece of each to leave them each in a single member district and did the best I could to, or at least hopefully a decent job of adjusting them. With the assumption again, that they probably didn't want to be put together into a two-member district, which would still require a piece to be taken off.
Right.
So, so these, these, it happens kind of on both ends, it happens when they're too big and, you know, that, that is, that in a way is the more fatal problem in a sense, when they're just too big and they're not big enough to be a two-member district. And even if you don't want to make a two-member district. And you guys obviously didn't, but even if, even if I did, it wouldn't have been a way to do it without dividing a town somewhere. But apparently that's a theme that we're, we're all encountering in maybe slightly different ways, depending on other choices we want to make, but.
Franklin County, so Franklin County and Chittenden County, where they bang into each other really to present a lot of border problems, even, two-member district or single member district.
I mean, yeah, the, the issue always, and it's, it sounds kind of too obvious to have any deep meaning, but it really does come down to the size of the towns, you can't, that you can't get around.
Hey Jeremy, could you share your screen again for a second, just while, while it's up there, I'll talk about my solution to that.
Sure. Yeah, I have your map up here too. Do you see it?
No, no.
Not yet.
Wrong screen, I think Jeremy.
All right, let's do, yep, I shared the wrong screen, you're right. There we are. There we are.
That's a good idea.
Oh, good, because what? Oh, yeah, see. Yeah, that that's mine, it's all, so it's tough to see, really tough to see. But like for Georgia and Fairfax, I had. A combination with Saint Alden's Town in Georgia, so Georgia actually gets split once and gra and and then a graph from. Uh, Fairfax, but I I I use the river, which you can't really see on my map, but you can see it on yours, see see the river there. As it goes, I use that as the border to cut off Fairfax, which makes sense because actually Route fifteen goes right along the southern side of that. So when you come into Cambridge, this is how I solve the Cambridge problem, because my original map had Stowe paired with part of Cambridge, which would get me killed in my hometown. Uh, so I had to fix that, but it actually makes sense, because if if you're in Cambridge, you're just driving on fifteen into Fairfax, you don't even know you've crossed the border. But I like using that river. As a as a line of demarcation, if we can't use a town line, because I just feel like people. Will gravitate towards whatever side of the river they're on politically and culturally. So half of what's under that river goes in is the part that I graphed it on to a Georgia district. And half of it goes to Cambridge and then a chunk of Georgia. Gets put in with Saint Alden's Town, uh, you know, when you look at it, I think it's, this is, I I would love to have a new solution to what I have.
Well, I can describe what I did, and it actually looks kind of similar to. To Jeremy, the the, I took a chunk in a very similar spot. From Georgia. That Jeremy did. In fact, it's quite. Almost identical, which is funny. We didn't talk, right, Jeremy?
Not that I remember.
No, I don't think we did. Um, I actually, that is where mine is, I I can't tell you the exact border lines, because I don't have the. Can't access MapTitude from this computer, but it is basically in the same area and.
Here, I.
Yeah, if you zoom in, you'll see the little little tiny square there, it's just funny, it's really written this up.
Hold on, so yeah, I'm just the the control, expecting different controls like I've been MapTitude and it's it's just not.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's really exactly the same spot, it's just kind of hilarious to me, but anyway. Um, something was appealing, but I think because of where the roads were and stuff, I definitely tried to pay attention to that. And then, um. Fairfax, my my. District I created there, I took a piece off of Fairfax, which needed it, um, to also. Work with some other things that were happening in in Franklin, the way I had divided up other 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 to create other districts. That it made sense to put it with Fletcher and then a couple of other towns, so that was a district I wasn't too happy about. It's kind of looks like an interesting animal that I think is not necessarily a good thing, so that's Franklin, what's labeled. It should be New Franklin six, it's it's. I have a new, the one that we're seeing now, it doesn't have the labels that clearly identify which districts. Are really new. So there isn't, there is a Franklin six that currently exists, but it's different from this, so.
Okay.
But anyway, these are, these were the same, you know, as we've said a few times.
Oh, I I wanted to just take a pause for a moment here and 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 acknowledge the. Presence with us this morning of Robert Christow Johnson, good morning, Robert. Uh, Robert has been in dialogue with me over the. Impending. Uh, review and action on the city of Burlington City Councilor. Uh, districts and that process, as it may. Be in, you know, the dynamics of that with this current process, he, Robert, you can unmute yourself if you want, you were. Involved in that process the last time it happened.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I actually am the person who drew the map for the 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 eighth ward map for the city of Burlington. Uh, I'm the guy who drew it and for good or bad, because there are people who hate it and. Um, but I drew that map for Burlington, but my concern, I'm I'm join, I wrote Rob Roper. Last night and he got back to me right away and I got the Zoom link and sorry for dropping in. Uh, and kind of when I joined, I was unmuted and then there's a lot of noise, I'm sorry about when I joined that that there was noise coming from me. Um, I have three concerns, if I can share them now with you about about Burlington, and I don't know where Ed Adrian is, but. I would.
He wasn't, he had a conflict this morning.
Okay, can I speak a little bit for Burlington?
Yeah, if in particular, if you could explain what is what the challenges. There are from your local knowledge, now we're we're obviously expecting. To the extent that the Apportionment Board. Proposes in this tentative phase. Some internal subdivisions, we're really look, will be looking to Burlington to react to that and say.
Yep.
Some of those are good, some of those are lousy, et cetera.
Yep, so let let me let me share with you three different things. Um, so first of all, you even now, the current map, but also the proposed map. Um, has, um, the the, their districts one, four, five and one, four, or no, one, three, five and one, three, six, I think. But there's two districts in Winuski that encroach a little bit over the river and. Um, have, um, some stake in Burlington, which I don't think is necessary, we don't. I divided it out and we would ideally have ten point four, three representatives, state representatives in Burlington. Um, if it was ideal in terms of the population and ten representatives, exactly ten, is still within five percent. Of, um, and would be constitutional, it would not, it would, it would satisfy the ten percent rule, I believe. Um, and so I don't think, I don't think we need to have this, what I would call a fiction. That Representatives Taylor Small and Hal Colston, um, they're really representing Winuski people. And, um, but their their districts would come into Burlington a little bit, and that doesn't need to happen. We could have, we could have our ten representatives in Burlington. Go out and respect the city line and 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 not, uh, I don't know how you guys put it, uh, the the terminology where you. Where the the district boundaries would conform to the town line, we could have it conform to the town line. So that's that's one thing that I would throw out there, and that would make it so that we would have exactly ten representatives in Burlington. And then up in the New North End, which is the part of the town that I live. Um, there's one political concern, and I see no solution to this at all, other than going, keeping with having two representatives. In, um, this would be the districts Chittenden six dash one. Um, which is the district that has Bob Hooper and Carol Odie in. And right now, the the district that you have is marked as one, four, two. That's that green district that, well, at least it was green on the map when I looked at it yesterday. Uh, District one, four, two has both. Um, Bob and Carol in it, and Bob is just barely in it, he's at the, he's at, he's at the corner of Star Farm Road. And North Avenue and and. It's just an unfortunate place where the line goes, but I can't see how it can be nudged. Uh, uh, but that's a political concern anyway, but that leaves that district that's called one, four, one. Which is actually the district I live in, there's nobody living in that district that. I would see that would jump out and run, so if we did, if we separated those and they were in single member districts. First, Bob and Carol would have to play musical chairs, because they both would not be able to. To uh, represent that District one, four, two, and then. I don't know who would come out of the woodwork and run in one, four, one. I just, I just think it would be better if that was a two-person district, a two-member district, like it is now. But then.
Ra- Robert, uh, for whatever it's worth, as they say. The the statutes that set up the Apportionment Board and tell us.
We can't consider incumbency.
We're not, we're not really considering incumbency per se.
I know that.
It's sort of, it's sort of hovering out there at times.
Right. I know that, and that's why I said that that it's just a political concern I have that I discovered last night when I saw the map or the night before last night when I saw the map. Okay, then, so here's another thing about drawing the lines, and it will have to do with one, four, one, one, four, two and one, four, three, so. One, four, three is the district that would be the same as Chittenden six dash two, which is now Emma's district, but it used to be Gino Sullivan's district. And it's really a natural boundary is the Ethan Allen Park. And not the Parkway, but Ethan Allen Park. And there's really no reason for that a little odd neighborhood that has Lopez and Sandy Lane, I think it's called Lopez and Rosade. And that's, doesn't have to be in one, four, three. Um, that that could go in one, four, two, and one, four, two is a little light. Um, and then, um, there is a neighborhood that's Moore Drive, M O O R E, Moore Drive, that's in one, four, three. And that doesn't need to be in one, four, and one, four, three is heavy, it's forty five hundred people in one, four, three. Um, and it's going to get heavier because of the of the Cambrian rise. Um, development, which is in one, four, three, it's, that's going to really get heavy in the near future.
Robert, that's, we're we're going to cut you off there because we have other stuff, but send, put that in writing, you know, for a chance and. Uh, we'll, we'll look, we'll look for that.
It's in that email that I sent to Rob Roper.
Okay.
That I think you guys got carbon, carbon copied and his response.
We're catching up with some of our emails from last night.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for being in 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 the meeting this morning.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you know, and but it's just some lines around one, four, three. That they don't have to be there, even you're trying to preserve an existing line that doesn't need to be preserved, you should move the border. To where Ethan Allen Park is.
Okay.
I just want to clarify something, um, maybe. Maybe it is clear, but there isn't any map that's currently available to the public that is a proposal of the board.
Right, I know, it was, it was his, the trial map, the trial, Rob Roper's trial run.
It's fine, it's fine, and I thought you understood that, but I just wanted to be clear that it wasn't like that, that's the one that we are debating whether we're gonna, I mean, we we could be debating them all, sort of. We're not really debating any of them yet, is what I'm trying to say.
I I understand that, I'm just trying to get in on early, I I'm trying to get in there early to, before something gets carved into stone.
These are all great suggestions and I really.
No, I I appreciate it too, I just wanted to make it, make it clear, um, I I actually online didn't do any division at all, because I. I want to take in some of this, um, information and.
I will get it in writing, and I do have the email addresses as everybody on the committee as it looks now, that I can get from the Secretary of State's. Page map, I have your email addresses, I will compose a nice email and send it formally to all of you.
Thank you.
But I, and I don't have access to District Builder, I hope for the city of Burlington, I get access to a map. Software, but I don't, I don't know the census blocks, but. Um, but the the census blocks where Moore, Moore Drive is, the census blocks where Lopez Street or Lopez Ave, I don't know what it is called.
Hey, I I have a suggestion, Robert, so one of the next steps too is for us to get these maps to the towns and the cities. Um, so I would say your next stop, so in addition to giving us those comments, which we can definitely take into account. Get a hold of the Board of Civil Authority or equivalent thereof in the city of Burlington, it will, it will be on their laps momentarily. And they will likely be proposing, you know, intra-town, intra-city divisions at this point, so I think they are the ones that have. That that are going to be best poised to take your concerns to heart, like, because it's like, 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 um, you know, Gene was just saying. We're, the, any divisions that I drew in Burlington was just for my convenience to just get on with it, so. I I'm perfectly happy to say we need, so honestly Burlington would be better, better fit by nine districts, not ten, if you're, if you have to keep within Burlington, just just saying.
No, no.
Timeout.
It would be ten or eleven, we are.
Timeout, we're we're not going to get, we're not going to go there right now, we. This is a work session to help us with the maps to get to the point where we can send something to the towns and to the cities, and then they can have at it and tell us.
I, I mean, I don't know how many districts, but we should have. At least ten representatives in Burlington, I mean, we could have eleven and it would still be within the plus or minus five percent.
You're, you're, you're right, I was, I was reading it wrong, you're right.
Hey Robert, just just so you know, District Builder is a is a free software for people to use, I mean, we're using MapTitude is our official one, which you have to have a. You have to pay for, but if you want to fiddle with district locks and whatnot, districtbuilder.org, you can create your own.
I I know, I used District Builder eight years ago when I did the, the, when I drew the map for Burlington. Um, when I drew the ward map for Burlington, and and they're going to connect us, I'm on the committee now for Burlington, they're going to connect us. But I don't know how to get the data, I don't even know how to get the census data, but you gotta get the census data and the shape data.
It's. If you feel, if you feel like playing with it, if not, I understand.
So, no, I want to play with it, I just don't, I need links to get into that, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to get into it.
Districtbuilder.org, if you just go to districtbuilder.org, they'll take you from there.
And and they'll have like, they have the census data in it and the and the the shape data and everything?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll do that, I'm going to go to districtbuilder.org.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, I'm going to, I'll I'll mute now.
Okay. The. As I indicated in a message last night, I have to get, uh, step out of the meeting. Quite soon, but I want. Uh, I hope that the work session can continue and and that you can. Help each other out with problem areas. One of the things to keep in mind is that I I hope that by Monday or someday next week, that the the board can. Is going to have to take a vote on a map to send to the Boards of Civil Authority. For the House districts, our our work on the House districts won't stop with that, and we may find that. Uh, because of the exigencies of the schedule, we will have to be voting on a map that even we think. Uh, isn't quite where we want it to be, but we can make that clear when we, when we publish it to the towns, but. We have to give the towns adequate time in order for them. To hold meetings of their Boards of Civil Authority and do their analysis and and feedback to us, so it's just. By way of of reiterating that. We are going to need to get to the point of taking a vote on one of these maps or some revised version of them. Uh, very, very soon. And I think we all know that, but it's it's worth, it's worth, I wanted to 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 emphasize it. And. Um, I don't think you need to have a chair pro tem for the balance of the work session. But if you do, I'm confident that you can figure out how to do that.
Um, really quickly, before you leave. Um, I'm getting asked by Mia and Chris if there was anything that you anticipate the board needing. Assistance on for over the weekend or for beginning Monday and Tuesday.
The, I think the, this, this, the, the, the thing that I'm most focused on right now, Eric, is giving support to Rob to get. His District Builder map converted to. Uh, MapTitude. I think that would be the, if there's any way to 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 effort and facilitate that, that would be terrific.
Because if that is left entirely to me, it will not happen.
So 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 maybe as a as a segue from there. Do we want to, um, starting from Rob's map or some combination of of ours, I can put MapTitude up on the screen. I can start a fresh map and we can just the. You know, the group of us. You know, the group of us right now go through and if not replicate Rob's map, at least, you know, plow through it. And then make a list of unresolved concerns or places where maybe we, you know. Maybe it should better match Gene's map that has a two-seat district or something like that. I mean, we, I, I can do that. We're not going to get through the whole map because. I have to be out of here at about eleven, I'm sorry, twelve forty. To get to another meeting.
Jeremy, I think that's a, a great idea and I encourage you all to give it a try. It, it is no harm in, in, in starting that process. See how it works out and how well it goes.
Is everybody else thinking that's reasonable? Okay. Well, let me, let me get my, my stuff together here. Let me create a new map and we'll, we'll have at it.
While he's doing that, I have a question and this. Well, actually I'll, I'll wait because Jeremy, well, Mary, Mary may, may have come across this as well. I'm thinking it's folks who've been working in MapTitude and that is, although you may have seen it in District Builder potentially too. And that is occasionally I would come across. I would come across the boundaries for the existing districts. Say in a city. So like maybe, well, I, I forget which ones. That is, they would already be in there. I didn't choose them because that's not what I did. I kind of, because they, they do adjusting and I didn't. So I didn't choose them as the, as the, as the current districts, but. Occasionally that was a possibility and occasionally it didn't seem to be a possibility and I. I'd love to get that clarified and, and, because that would be helpful. And, and that actually, the second half of this is about Burlington, just in general. I would love to get a nice, large version map of all those districts. So I, I, you know, attempted to draw in where, where the meets and bounds, boundaries were. Of the current, current districts, but I, I would love to get a better version of that.
So I think, I guess it's pretty, it's complicated and how that's possible. But me, I could get Mia to join in on the call to talk about what it takes to get.
Yeah.
Printing, what's, what's possible, what the timeframes are, things like that.
Right. I mean, it may, I, I'm not, yeah, I think it will be necessary at some point. Or at least it's certainly useful. It'll be useful to me. Like, I'm, I think the enacted maps are available in MapTitude. I just remembered now. I didn't. No, no. So what I'm looking for is a nice, large version of all the districts that currently exist in Burlington.
Oh, in Burlington?
Yeah.
Oh. Together or individually?
See, if you can live, I mean, I, I made notes to myself where the boundaries are. We were talking about this earlier and I don't want to. Reengage this, so you have to get into it now, but eventually I, you know, I really would love to get a nice. Visual of all the districts in Burlington and where the boundaries are.
Together? They went together? All the puzzle pieces put together? Because they exist separately.
I have descriptions. I just would like a visual.
If you go to this really awesome website called EthanAllen.org, we have. That says probably on the Secretary of State's website too, but we have, you know, listed for each legislator, they have their own page.
Yeah.
Website and you, if you click on their district. You get a map, you get a map of what their district is and which we, this, it's just a link to the Secretary of State site.
I think actually there is specifically with the districts together.
All together?
See, there's a, an old website. From two thousand twelve, that's on the legis, that's supposed to be the legislature. That has.
Right.
Things that were provided to individual towns for certain areas. So there is Burlington area showing division Burlington and Newmarket.
Can you?
That has them all together.
I see. Oh, that's great. Can you send me a link? Would that be all right, Eric?
I'm going to drop this in the.
Okay.
Zoom and I'll send it to you directly.
All right. Thank you very much. I, I found it a different way, but, okay, sorry. We've got a task.
Oh, Jeremy's up and running. All right.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get some of the, some of the low hanging fruit that seems to be. Consistent between your, your map and my map and we consistently.
Well, if Bennington won, we all agree on that.
Yeah, that one's, that's an easy one.
That one was.
And down in, down in Wyndham too.
Yeah.
Okay. So this, was it Townsend, New Fane, Marlborough? So this is an eight, this is an eight percent, but does that match? Is good, good to go?
Yeah, that's, that's the existing district.
Okay.
You mean, not yours?
No, then, well, it's mine, but it's, it's also the existing district. There's no change there, so.
Yeah, I, I. I, mine is very close. I carved out a piece to, to reduce that because I was trying to get things under eight. I, you know, I want to figure out ways to do it, even if we end up deciding we don't need to do it. I took out a small piece of Marlborough and added it to Wilmington. The, the district that's next.
Over here?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, well, let's, let's make that district then. So Rob had Wilmington, part of Whitingham. And Halifax.
Yeah, that's the current district, right?
So that just, that district on its own is a nice one point nine four, but has, there's ramifications. To the west.
Yeah. I mean, that, that was actually my district also with these slight adjustments that I just mentioned to you. I returned. There was a portion of Whitingham that had been carved out. That, that was, that was the, that was that bit of humor that Mary sent, I believe.
Right.
But I returned that to Whitingham.
Okay. So, so I'm going to, let me create this district and then maybe we can go create the one of the west and sort of slice out.
I, I started calling that one the Franken District.
Yeah. I could, I could see that.
I, I mean, I just. And that Somerset with the six in it is, is part of the problem. Because it's. But anyway, I don't want to be, I don't want to say anything bad about Somerset over here.
Well, hold on. This, this isn't big enough. Where, where did the rest of this go? That's, that's kind of weird. Was, wasn't this, isn't there like not a way to get there from Dover to Somerset though?
No, the current district doesn't include. It doesn't include the two westernmost, if you can zoom back out, Jeremy. It doesn't include Glastonbury or Woodford. Her district, the, the woman who's in that, that district there, it, it actually was Stanford and everything else. But not Glastonbury or, or Woodford. That's the current district. It goes Rethwaite, Seersburg, Somerset, Dover, Worksboro.
Yep, with that little chunk of Whitingham.
With the little chunk of Whitingham, exactly.
Okay, but this, so this as it is right now is a negative nine point eight, so I can see why you might want to dig into. Some of Whitingham here. Does that, does that make sense if I just create this as a Bennington, Wyndham?
Yes. That, that's, that's exactly what I have.
Yeah, right.
Jeremy, do you remember what yours is down there? I'll look, I'll look. You keep going. I'll look. I have it here. But you, you, you actually devised these differently, so you keep going.
Yeah, I, I had Bennington's sliced out and take part of, part of Bennington was with Woodford, as I recall. All right, so.
Yeah.
So, so I think if, if we can just leave this district, I think we come back later and do the kind of the boundary adjustment down here.
Yeah.
Or, or even potentially up into, up into this one, which would be maybe a better. Because this one's down four twenty-two and if we could, if we could scoop out four hundred and twenty-two at a New Fane or something like that, then that would be. We could almost get to zero in both, both. But, all right, so let's do new districts. So Bennington gives us, yeah, right, it, it's in a really, really, so that. Two hundred and fifty-seven percent deviation. There's not really then a. You can't really do it with three, you can't really do it with four, three's too, too many people in there and four's too little. So you have to peek up into Shaftesbury, I think.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Okay.
I mean, I, one's different anyway, but I guess there's, that at least is in common with all of ours having to take. I took the southwest, a little bit from the southwest. I, my understanding, though, I don't want to. Out of personal knowledge, but. Is that right north of North Bennington, you're into Shaftesbury, so it's kind of a natural spot. It's very. So the southwest corner area or somewhere.
Okay, so, so if I can make the suggestion that if we leave Bennington. Like this, and so we're just carved part of Shaftesbury out and if we left it to the Bennington BCA. To actually say, how are you going to divide this and join with this chunk of Shaftesbury up to the north? Leave that up to them so that we don't spend the time right now hashing out.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, so where did, where did you have, where were you carving it up into, like to the, on this side or on the west?
Actually, wait. No, I have something that's slightly different. How do I do this?
Yeah, you, you had a chunk of Bennington and then most of Shaftesbury.
No, I had.
Here's what you had.
You have. It's like part of Bennington is up with Shaftesbury.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, that's the, that's the idea, but, but what part of Shaftesbury are we carving out to join part of Bennington?
He's got the opposite. He's got part of Bennington carved out and joined Shaftesbury.
Yeah, I have three districts in Bennington and then a Shaftesbury Bennington district.
That, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Oh, you're right. You're right. You're right. Okay, so I've got a little part, see, see what it, that sixty-seven A. In the upper left-hand corner of Bennington. I carved that off with, with the south and eastern. Three quarters of Shaftesbury district.
Very well. Let's do, let's try to do the same. So this right here, this sort of.
Yeah, you go along seven A. So from where you're on there roughly up through, along that line of seven A to the, to the right.
Right, but, but what I, what I just randomly scooped up there gets, gets us at exactly a perfect, almost a perfect four districts, almost down to the person. So if we make this slightly smaller. Maybe just follow, follow seven over here. And get rid of some of these that maybe just follow Church Street here and then we'll add, add some more. You can see kind of the method to my madness, so this is still here more like that than. Okay, this gets us at, this gets us to the three hundred here. This is like exactly four districts. So this bottom part of Shaftesbury and then this chunk of Bennington here. And then you've got the other three, the other three districts divided however they want to divide it. Okay, so I'm going to call this. We'll call it was two at this point. Yes, Bennington two and I'm going to put the, I, I like the annotation X here. Because I think that it needs to be subdivided then.
Okay. Okay, do you put the number like X four?
X four, that's, that's a great idea. So it has to be divided four ways. Okay, perfect. Okay, zoom back out. Okay, so Arlington, the rest of Shaftesbury gives us a nice negative one point one two. All right, what, what's next? You want to go back down into Brattleboro? All right, Brattleboro is not, is not, not quite three seats. It looks like we may have to.
This is changing yours.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to figure out how. So we, there must be just a lot more Shaftesbury in that district because I have Arlington, Sunday and Sandgate. Or which is plus three ten. Just trying to figure out how my math works. I don't have a problem with looking, but it makes sense. Or it might make sense.
Yeah, so I, I mean, we can always do the, we can always do the, the, the border adjustments if Sunderland needs to go in here. And we need to push up this boundary to make something else work. That seems, that seems reasonable.
Low hanging fruit, Manchester is a single member district.
Easy peasy. Okay, well, that sort of necessarily leaves us to Sunderland, Stratton, plus whatever else.
I'm going to interrupt briefly. I'm not sure this is the best use of our time.
Okay, what's the best use of our time?
Maybe it is for Rob. I, I don't want to actually speak for someone else, but. I mean, you guys, this is great. What you guys are doing is not maybe the best use of my time, maybe I should say, because. Unless, unless we really are, unless we're all trying to collaborate on a brand new map, it looks like. That's a little like what you guys are doing.
What's, but I, I, I would hope that we can incorporate your map in here as well. So if there's logical places where we are doing things that are different from your map, can we incorporate your changes? Because at some point we're going to need to reconcile, but someplace, sometime really soon, we're going to need to settle. On something to give to the towns. So if we can sort of do what, what Tom wants us to do and have Rob's in. Rob's map in this format, but we can take into account the work that you've done.
I understand. I, I guess that we're already different enough that I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that's going to work. I mean, you keep going and I'll, I'll keep, keep thinking about maybe some options for that, but you're, you're already kind of. At least in this section of the map, I don't really see how it's going to happen. Keep, keep going.
Are, are, are you sure? I mean, we can, we can certainly back, I mean, we've not gotten that far. So if we can back up and if you're looking at like, there's a better two-seat district for some combination of towns.
No, no, it isn't really that. It's just that I didn't have Glastonbury and Woodford with that big, big other district. I had Jamaica instead. And, but that, that then you have to put them somewhere and I think it's just not worth trying to haggle over that necessarily.
So, so I, I, I guess my question is, what, when, when are we going to do the haggling then?
Well, I think that eventually we're going to really end up with different maps and we're going to have to discuss the pluses and minuses of, minuses of them. And then decide which one we like the best and not.
Rather than trying to, to reconcile them? Is that what you're saying?
I think that it's too difficult. Almost immediately you start to get into. If this moves here, then that just disrupts too many other things. Maybe the northern part of the state will find more, more places of commonality. So you can keep going. I just, I think you've already made it. You're not going to be able to use, use what I did except in a couple of places possibly coming up. So, so keep going for now. I'll, I'll see.
Okay, so I, I, I just, I just don't want you to feel like we're, like we're wasting your time. If there's a better thing that we can be doing and talking about the, the merits of the existing map, rather than trying to put this into. MapTitude. But let's, let's do that instead. I mean, I, I certainly don't want to keep you.
It, it's not, I, I, I mean, I think you should keep going for now and I'll, and I'll try to make up my mind about, about whether it's. It needs to be done at some point. I just, and since you're going pretty quickly, you might as well just keep going.
Okay. So I guess Sunderland or Brattleboro, start from there.
I, let's finish Bennington County. So Sunderland, Stratton.
Okay.
Jamaica, Win Hall. Is Win Hall working there? Because Win Hall, Win Hall, Stratton, Jamaica are all the Stratton Mountain. So they make sense. Win Hall, is Win Hall working there? Because Win Hall, Win Hall, Stratton, Jamaica are all the Stratton Mountain, so they make sense.
Okay, and then we're still six, 600 short, so we can go like that.
Londonberry might make more sense.
So, so, and where does Land Grove, where does Land Grove live in, I'm looking? Oh, you, you, you have Peru and Land Grove together. So that's.
So 12, yeah, Stratton, Jamaica. Londonberry, Win Hall.
I don't know.
Which?
This is too big. So Sunderland.
Sunderland, yeah, Sunderland is not part of my map, so.
Right, you had Sunderland, Arlington, Sandgate.
Yeah.
And Shaftesbury. Part of Shaftesbury anyways.
Which would be too big. Okay, so what do we lose? Does that work with Londonberry separate?
No, it's, that's minus 14.
Alright, what about Peru, Peru and Land Grove?
Yeah, that gets us to 2.43.
Alright, well, let's, let's I guess let's say that's good for now.
Oops.
Nobody's left out, right? We got everybody, Somerset's in there.
Appears to be. And then we'll have the, these northwestern towns probably joining a bit of, bit of Rutland. So what, like, oops. Like that.
What's that? Of course, that's a, I mean, Mount Tabor.
Well, I don't know that we want to add Mount Tabor at this point, we're already at five.
Okay, alright. Yep. So one of the advantages I had in my map, though, when we start getting into here is and getting into Rutland above that, is the current district, we're able to say that in its entirety, which was that Middletown Springs Wells Paula and Rupert, so. So what if we take Rupert out of there and add, I don't know, because Peru would use.
So we could add Sandgate to this Bennington three here. I mean, it's, it's gonna make it, make it bigger, but.
Well, that, that kind of makes sense, because that's more in line with the existing district, Arlington, Sandgate.
Okay. Okay. That increases the deviation quite a bit, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then Rupert comes out of the Dorset and Andy district, and we add Mount Tabor.
Okay, stand by. This is not, not the most. Okay, so we want that to go to unassigned. Bye-bye. Got it? Now we're, we're 660 light, we can go to Weston.
Yeah.
That's a, almost a perfect. Okay.
That, that's good, definitely, that's all the split in the map that I have, so that's nice. Can find Weston and split, and then this one it's not, so that's a positive.
So this, this we could actually, this is quite large, 9.24, if we took Tinmouth out, we actually come, come in a little bit lighter.
Okay.
No, I, I wanted to ask about one more student.
We should increase the new ski to six representatives.
Alright, so let's, let's go back down to Brattleboro, as we sort of left that. So Brattleboro is almost exactly four. I'm sorry, that's, that's not true.
No, I, I had it exactly, I was able to divide it into three.
Yeah, it's, it's three, but it's a little looks like, let's see, 16 short, so divided by three, so it ends up being about minus five each.
Yeah.
You could you, you can steal a little from Marlborough, maybe.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, because that, that's gonna be quite, quite a bit lower, and so is that, Mary, is there a logical place in Marlborough that's really feels like more like Brattleboro?
Um, I'm, I'm actually not sure where the dividing line is, so I would go right along the, this, that boundary where you are.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And see what happens.
Alright, so, so why don't, why don't we leave that, that for right now, knowing that we can likely take a chunk of this to make the to make these values work better?
Yeah.
But that, that's, that's, that's an easy sort of overflow valve then. Alright, so we're at Wyndham, we'll be Wyndham four. Call that Wyndham four X three. I didn't, should have changed this up here too. Okay, we'll, we'll get back to that.
And Dummerston and Putney, I think most everybody had that.
I had that.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things that I changed.
Um, just really quickly. Mia sent you all an email. She's asking if you have identified items that you'll need for the Monday meeting um, to get that detailed list of deliverables to her as soon as possible, and specify what the need might be, so that she can hopefully get as much of that done today before having to put in time over the weekend.
Okay.
So just pointing your attention to that email and asking for specificity.
Is, is putting together a version of my district builder map into magnitude too big of an ask?
I, I don't think so.
If, if she could do that for Monday, that would be huge, I, I can't really work on it this weekend, I have family stuff going on, and some work stuff on Saturday, I have to make up for doing this.
Okay. Would would she be picking up from where this leaves off, or?
Well, it might make sense to just do the map as it is, and then this can be the compromise between the two, and we'll probably ultimately gravitate towards this, but I think this is something that we can work on, and that is something she can work on, does that make sense to you guys?
Kind of, but it seems a little duplicative, I mean, I, I thought that's what we were trying to do, so that we wouldn't have to we wouldn't have to, have to rebuild your map.
Okay, well, I mean, it okay, well, well, that makes sense, but my worry is that we're gonna, I'm seeing stuff where we might start getting into the, to the tile carving thing, where it's, we're gonna get to the the crunch part, and the differences are gonna add up to things that don't act exactly fit. So my, my, my only thought was that if we had this version of my map, your map, and G's map as sort of the three maps that we're gonna compromise on, and this being a compromise map would at least have three complete maps for Monday.
I got you.
I don't want to be duplicative, and that's why I asked if it's too big an ask.
No, that, that, that makes sense.
I don't know, I'll just phrase it like this, Mia's offered up the ability to work today and over the weekend, or whatever's needed. If an ask is too big, she'll let you know.
Okay.
I, I didn't get.
The request.
I didn't get an email to that, unless, unless I, it was in it. Was it just in the last hour? I mean, I know how to contact her, but I just want to make sure she did get something that I got it.
Yep, I, I, I see it 12:13 PM.
Because I see you put together Westminster, Athens, and Brookline, that's exactly what I have.
Okay, this so this is, stands up with a minus eight deviation, but I think that will.
Um, let me just see what I have for that. I have that, I didn't. So I have Westminster. Brookline, Rockingham, Westminster, so yeah, it's just, it's just like.
Like, like that?
Yeah.
As a, as a two-seat?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you know. And then I had Athens. Um. I had a cross. I think I had Athens, Grafton, Wyndham, Chester.
Okay.
But you see now Londonberry is gonna get stranded. Well, maybe not, I don't know.
I don't know that necessarily does, it could go if Londonderry and Andover have roads, this is a, that's an, I mean it's a little bit of a dogleg thing here, but it, the deviation works out.
Okay, no, I, I.
You say dogleg, but a lot of the, the ones that are, I mean, that's just the way the mountain ranges run, and the way a lot of roads run, so when you get a one that's north to south.
Yeah, I know.
They look, right, not compact, but it really works with the roads.
I only, it just looked like you had, you'd already used everything around it, I was just saying, sorry.
Okay. Alright, well, let's, yeah, let's, let's go back down and do the Westminster, the Brookline, Westminster, Rockingham, we'll just put it as a two, a two-seat subdivisible. And this is your, this is your next one then?
That's the one I have, you know, next to it, yeah. And that's also, so that's a one seat.
Yeah. Oh, actually, we're in that's Wyndham and Windsor, but.
It is, yeah, it, it, it's, um.
We'll, we'll have to change the names. The titles anyways.
Oh, yeah, I, oh, yeah, so Windsor, Win, Windsor, Wyndham. Um. Did you guys end up with Springfield when you divided, but it didn't, it doesn't need anything else?
Yeah, I had it as two equal single member districts, but, yeah.
Look, Jeremy, it looks like you have I don't know what that is, it looks like a little, little nip.
Yeah, I, I, I probably had, I probably had this like shared up into Weathersfield or something, I honestly, I don't remember that. That was something I did pretty early on, so I was not, I don't remember it well. But that, that, that works out with, what a five and a half percent positive deviation for both halves, so this is another two, two-seat candidate splatable.
Yeah. Or, or not, whichever, exactly. And then I had, um what is that up there? Weathersfield. Yeah, Walthamore, Cavendish, Weathersfield.
Yeah, that gives us four, if we get 4% deviation.
Yeah, four and a half.
Yep. 4.1, yep, that's, so as I'm doing this, I don't, if you can see my screen, it actually shows you the deviations up here.
No, it's true, I, 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 and I was in the wrong box, so I. There. West Windsor, I had Hartland, West Windsor, Windsor. But that's a two member, so.
Yeah.
Hartland is, Hartland is one that's I think it's too big to be a single member, if I'm remembering correctly.
Too big.
So you, you know, it's one or the other, basically, chopping or joining.
Yeah, I, I, I think I had like Windsor and half of West Windsor in one, and Hartland and half of West Windsor in the other. I, I, I think that's.
That's where I had it, I think. Reading in there, too.
Well, yeah, so, so Reading would give an average of 5% deviation between the two districts. Without Reading, it gives you, it's, and that would be a negative three. Or negative two and a half anyways.
I had Plymouth, Redding, Woodstock, which is, which is what the current district is, but that may not.
And that's, that's that's a nice 1% deviation, so.
Right, exactly.
I could definitely see favoring that.
Yeah, let's try to keep that.
So let's, let's do this as a two-seat potentially subdivitable. So Windsor, three, two X. Oops. Come on. Alright, so starting to inch our way up. Where'd you like to go next?
I need to, that, that's one of the more challenging areas, I think so, I'm, I'm not surprised we didn't necessarily find areas that overlap. Because once you go in a different direction, you really, it's really hard to.
Yeah, no, you take one little town and.
Well, and, and again, when you have a town that only has these people in it, but it's, but provides continuity for other things, it becomes very peculiar. Alright, so where, oh yeah, that area, let's see, now Holly. Now we're into Rutland County, so yeah, I had Ludlow, Mount Holly, Shrewsbury.
So this, this gives us minus five. This gives us positive seven.
One of the things is that Tinmouth and Wallingford, well, I guess, that's not, it's not terrible, but they are kind of separated by you know, the one, they're in like two parallel valleys sort of situation. There, there's nothing you can't get, it's nothing you can't in fact, right now, the, the eastern strip of Tinmouth is, is Win Wallingford, but I think that's because that strip is, is closer to it.
Is, is this passable in the winter, in the winter, this?
I don't know about the winter, I, I, it's just that it's, it's, they are kind of in different realms, that's all, but that doesn't have to, you know, beyond that now, so.
Well, so I, I'm happy just, I'm happy to do whatever, I mean, positive seven and a half versus minus five, I mean, it's kind of a wash. If, if this makes more sense, you know, with, with some of the existing, you know, school districts, or, you know, just getting there with roads, if that makes more sense, then let's do that.
I don't really have a and in some ways, I feel like if, if you can use a bigger town without causing problems, it's, it's easier later, but that's just my general view.
Okay, I, I mean, so it, it looks to me like at least roadways, Tinmouth and Ira and Tinmouth and Clarendon seem to be a bit more roadways, Tinmouth and Ira and Tinmouth and Clarendon seem to be a bit more tightly bound.
I think that's probably true.
Okay, well.
You had Timmison and Middletown Springs, which is actually a good combination, but I think we already.
Yeah, that's too that's too heavy.
Yeah.
So let's let's do this as.
Yeah, you can just try that for now.
So is I can't tell is Wallingford in that's in Rutland County, right?
These are all wrong, yeah.
These are all Rutland?
Yeah.
Oh, good deal. Even better. Well, there's no way out of this one without splitting a town.
What do we have two?
We need about another nine hundred and fifty to get to even.
How much? So the the one that we just did, the Rutland one there, that's seven fifty three too big.
Yeah.
What I did in my map is I there's a river that goes along Route seven. I carved off that bit of of Wallingford and added it to Clarendon.
Okay. Yes, we can do that.
And that might make make them both work.
It 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 won't make them both work. This is negative twenty two right now.
Oh, I thought that was I thought that was positive seven five three.
So this is positive seven five three. The district that I'm looking the tentative district with these three towns in it Irish, Clarendon, Tinmouth is minus twenty two. So even if we added all of that seven in there, we get only up to minus fifteen.
Oh.
So there's still there's still needs to be more.
This is this is this is one of these other difficult areas in part because it it they've lost population. So it's.
Right.
Um, and what I did, it's gonna be too difficult to be compatible.
Well, what did you?
Without backtracking.
Maybe we that's what I was saying. I think that we're gonna get to points in this where we need to backtrack.
What I did was. I did divide something, but it was so basically I put Polkney, Ira and a part of Wells to to make it be big enough. And then like a part that wouldn't divide Middletown Springs from basically the rest of Lakes and Cap, which is you can see that lake is divided in half. I just took what's basically east west of Route thirty, which goes along the eastern side of that lake in Wells. And. Interestingly, the very tip of Cone's Point is in Wells, which I lived at, which I didn't realize all those years. Well, it was only for a summer. Anyway, um. So I I took that, I added it to Polkney, and then I and then I had and then I had some other stuff, but I'm not sure. Forget that I had Middletown Springs, the rest of Wells, Pollard and Rupert, but I think did we already use Rupert?
Yeah, this is I mean, it's it's all so Rupert through Middletown Springs right now is is one district.
Oh, it is. Okay, well, you you well, I'll just tell you what I did. That is the current district and to fix the Polkney Ira district, which is what it is currently. I know you guys can think of it this way, but that's I just took a portion of Wells that was around eight hundred people around the the lake. The sorry.
Which which you could do, and then and then you add Tinmouth back into the Middletown Springs district. But and then you need to find some stuff in Rutland Town because I I took the Polkney and Ira and I added a chunk of Rutland Town.
Oh, yeah, we can go that way, too. It's true, but then.
You know, and another, you know, if you if you're thinking of single town, single districts as the low hanging fruit ideal, Castleton is now that. So if you put that in and try to preserve that, then it creates another big rock in the middle of the river, so to speak. I'm sorry.
Well. Yeah, I think there could be other ways to do it. I the the only reason I I love the Wells one as much as it was a portion, which I tended to try to avoid was that that lake I think feels it does feel like a community, if you know what I mean, at least in some respects.
Okay, so if I so if I take this this Ben rut two and I add Tinmouth to it, we slice off this chunk of Wells. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I did. I just took that chunk of Wells, added it to Polkney, Ira, and that and then but Tinmouth I had. Where did I have Tinmouth? Sorry. Is with. Sorry, just. Oh, yeah, Timmison was with that. Yes, you're right. I'm sorry. That's correct. Middletown Springs, Pollard, Rupert, Tinmouth, and then the rest of Wells, so you don't drop off.
All right, so it's good new district. Actually, hold on one second. We're gonna I'm so you had you had pulled the Ira and us that slice of else is that is that right?
That comes out pretty pretty good that it's still what it at least. Let's see, it's um. It's it is negative five, five point six, but it's not the worst district that I have, so.
All right, so.
That was a challenge no matter what.
Right. That's why they pay us the big bucks.
I know.
So something like is it everything west of the lake or everything west of thirty?
It was everything west of thirty, pretty much all the way down to the border, if I I remember correctly.
Oh, wow, that that worked out super well.
Yeah.
Like that?
Yeah, that's it.
All right.
I think I had slightly less, but actually, the more you can take, the better in a way because it needs it. I mean, I eventually you you can't take anymore.
Yeah, this is this is seven hundred and fourteen in the in this particular slice.
Yeah, I mean, that can be adjusted in any case.
Right, four are we? Start to jump ahead. I jumped.
Actually, I took sixty nine, so you did better. So that was ended up being a negative.
Hold on one second. I I need to add the other towns back in. It's it it didn't take previously.
Probably around.
Minus four. That's so pretty good. I mean. It 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 makes the Bennington Rutland two thing here makes that look not as great, but still.
It's funny how the town of Middletown Springs feel like feels like there's a history here, how it ended up looking like that.
It was the middle of the town?
Well, I guess, yeah, maybe. And there is a spring there that was like a destination for people, you know, like one of these therapeutic. Things in nineteen hundred.
So. Clarendon, West Rutland, or where's like to go next?
I had, let's see.
Well, Clarendon, West Rutland, does that work? That's too big, right?
No, that's almost eight.
All right, well, why don't we make that a district and if we need to bleed some off of West Rutland and dividing up the rest of town, we can do.
Sounds great. Okay, maybe back over here then. What's the what's the current district with Fairhaven? Fairhaven, West Haven?
Is it two member with Castleton and?
And now Castleton works well.
And it's not a ten, but I think it works well with. I have it with Benson. Oh, I I didn't split off Castleton because I think this is a little too small. Or I can't. It looks almost right, actually.
Yeah, it's.
I think that's what I had.
Yeah.
This year.
My map is all blue. I can't tell where the line ends. But yeah, I think that's exactly what I had. And then Orwell, Shoreham, Bridgeport make up another nice district.
So you just follow the border up there?
Yeah. Then they're all connected by like, I think it's like Route seven or twenty two or.
So.
It is twenty two, twenty two. I mean, I I'll just. These are obviously not always gonna match, but I I got into Brandon being its own district.
Yeah, Brandon.
Which is pretty clear. Um, and then I put Pittsburgh with Chittenden because current.
So.
Pittsburgh and Proctor work too. I think that's what I have. Proctor being that little.
Yeah. So.
But then Hutter, Hubbard and Sudbury get from stranded. Do Pittsburgh, Hubbard, Sudbury.
Pittsburgh, Hubbard and Sudbury works.
It's twelve forty. I'm just alerting you.
Oh. Oh, so it is. Okay, so I probably have another few minutes.
I need to get going myself, too, but um, this was interesting, actually, in in a way. It was kind of kind of a I think this would have been difficult to do without all the work that you individually did because we know what we're looking at.
Right.
But I'm curious if it's gonna finish. I have this this tenuous feeling like we'll get to the end and God knows where we'll be, but.
With a hundred and forty nine perfect difference. Having been there.
Almost definitely, almost definitely. Do you so do you want to try to pick this up on on Monday? And try to do something like this on Monday, or are we going to?
When I I mean, that that could work. I I guess, sorry, interrupt, Derry. I what I wanted to say, as you said before, is one of the things I I haven't had a chance to do because I've been so focused on my own map is look at your maps a little bit in more detail. So I just understand some of the solutions you found, which I occasionally I have seen because you 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 provided an overview in a past meeting. Because I think that would be helpful in advance. I just wanted to make sure to say that because that I haven't had a chance to do that. And I think that that understanding what we have will be really helpful when we get to Monday and trying to make sense of whether there really is a, you know, what type of consensus we can come to, I guess, or or are we really just going to be dealing with very different maps and we just have to decide which we prefer.
Well, I hope we can come to a map that that is like this one where we have agreement on the larger breakdowns, but it's just maybe we come to it in past when it comes to breaking up the two member districts and the single member districts, but at least there'll be along lines that you have some.
I mean, there's gonna be districts that are gonna be more or less appealing to each of us for different reasons, but for sure. And some of it will be. Some of it will be the single member, double member divide, and some might be some other thing based on the region. I mean, for example, Tom is not happy about Tom K. Does not want. With Barry.
Well, no, no town's gonna want their their town divided in in some other other way, right? That's different than how it's been.
No, 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 and I and I'm not and I'm not trying to make an evaluation of that. I'm just saying there are different things that we're all gonna feel more or less strongly about. But I think that keep saving this and, you know, this I theoretically, I can go in there and look at it myself and try to finish it. See, see if it looks like something that I have a curiosity of I wouldn't mess with it. I would save a copy of it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, let me see where.
I I may not have time for that because I have my family visiting too this weekend, so there's a good chance I wouldn't, but given the there's a possibility.
Yeah, so this is you should. Yeah, you should have permission to see it. It's under here's the I don't think I can copy and paste it, but or if you can see that well enough. It's under the.
Your is it in your folder?
It's in my folder under Hanson. It's under October eighth collaboration.
Okay, I thought I can remember. Although I text myself just because you never know.
Rob, really quickly, are you done tinkering on the map that you had in District Builder?
Yeah, I'm done with it.
Okay. Mia's gonna try to do a file upload map to. It's unclear whether or not that will work. If it doesn't, she's not sure that with the amount of time before next week, she would be able to build a new map from scratch, but hopefully the quick file transfer will work.
Good.
So she's trying to let that.
And I'm sure she'll just let me know what happened to you.
Yep.
And also, maybe maybe you guys remember this or or not. Probably not, but I also use the X symbol symbology symbolism symbols when when I was not gonna bother trying to divide something. Same same idea. I like it. I didn't I didn't put the number, though I don't. And so that was a good innovation, but um, but it all the the number is available in the in the Excel sheet.
I do think we should put in some sort of dividing line.
I agree, and that.
Send it out just because if you if you tell somebody, figure out what to do with it, they won't do anything. But if you show them something that they hate, then they'll come back.
I would I would ignore it. I just my my um. I felt like it was more important to get to get it together rather than to deal with that. Okay.
All right, sounds good. We'll talk to you all on on Monday.
All right.
Yep.
Have a good weekend. Bye.
Bye.